Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll for the final time to open the meeting?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any additions or changes to this evening's agenda, council? Now we'll move to our consent agenda items. We have approval of minutes from the September 25th council meeting, approval of payroll from October 6th of $116,681.89. We have approval of retirement party for appreciation celebration not to exceed $1,200, and that would be out of local option sales tax, approval of the annual finance report, approval of the employment and planning and zoning of Don Travis, and a resolution of employment in the fire department of T.J. Terrell, approval of one liquor license for the cider house, and approval of claims in the amount of $721,623.49, of which those larger than $75,000 are to Carl A. Nelson, $100,998.7, the Iowa Assurance Pool, $229,546.24, and Piper Jaffray &amp; Company of $149,215. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items, council? I did want to draw your attention to the financial report. I found it interesting from under their last column budget, the very last number listed was the general obligation debt limit, and that's again calculated as 5% of our valuation, $27,881,800 against our current general obligation debt of $9237,000, which is approximately 33%, so in a very safe zone for that. Any other comments or questions, council? Now entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes, but only dipsting from the minutes from September 25th.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now council, we'll move on to our appearances for the council. I invited Chris Kukla from Area 15 Regional Planning to talk a little bit about the public participation plan and also the role that the RPA plays in our road funding. Chris, if you'd come up to the podium and join us, please, and...
Thank you. My name is Chris Kukla, and I'm the Transportation Director for the Area 15 Regional Planning Commission. The Planning Commission serves as extended staff and provides assistance to the cities and counties. In 1994, with the passage of the ICT, the Surface Transportation Program was created, and Iowa Transportation Commission decided to allocate a significant portion of funding for local programming through the regional planning affiliations. And with this, Regional RPA 15 was formed the same year. Since that time, the Iowa DOT delegates certain transportation planning activities and the programming of Surface Transportation Program Funds, now known as STBG, and TAP funds to the RPAs. RPA 15 provides transportation planning assistance to Jefferson, Keokuk, Mahaska, Van Buren, and Wapalo Counties and the cities within them. The RPA involves the cities of the region in the transportation planning process and coordinates the planning efforts between the entities with other local, state, and federal government agencies. Some of the major planning activities that the Iowa DOT delegates to the RPAs include: We prepare a long-range transportation plan for the region. This looks at the region's current transportation system, such as the condition, usage, identifies the problems and needs, discusses strategies to address the identified needs, also identifies projects and funding to implement projects for the next five years, and discusses longer-range policy goals and strategies, and we update this every five years. We do a passenger transit plan. This looks at the region's passenger transportation services to identify areas where there's a need of service or improvements to service. The plan identifies passenger transit services provided by public agencies, private companies, health and human service agencies, and schools, discusses strengths and gaps in passenger transit services, and looks to develop strategies and projects for improvement over the next five years, and we update this every five years. We do a passenger, not passenger, a transportation improvement program, which describes the process for identifying projects funded using federal aid within the region. This lists all the projects that will be receiving federal highway or FTA funds over the next four years. It's fiscally constrained and contains only projects that can be funded with anticipated revenue. This is updated every year. And then we do a public participation plan. This describes the process for involving the public in the development of documents and the decision-making of the RPA. This is reviewed every five years and updated as needed. Kind of going along with the public participation plan, the structure of the RPA involves the Policy Board, the Technical Advisory Committee, and then, to a lesser extent, the Transit Advisory Group. The Policy Board is the decision-making body of the RPA. This guides and sets the policies for the RPA, and is responsible for approving projects that are going to be receiving funding, and for approving them into the Transportation Improvement Program, and for approving documents for final adoption. Fairfield is represented on the Policy Board by Mayor Ed Malloy. Then there's also the Technical Advisory Committee, which serves as an advisory role to the Policy Board. It provides guidance and advice to the Policy Board. They review and rate projects and provide recommendations, including scoring on projects requesting funding, and provide input on transportation planning documents. Fairfield is represented on the Technical Advisory Committee by City Engineer Melanie Carlson. And then there's the Technical Advisory Group, which is kind of a smaller, less formal group, which discusses items of interest relating to passenger transportation, provides information and feedback on for the passenger transportation plan. For general outreach, we reach out to both the cities and counties in the RPA and to the general public. We use the Area 15 Regional Planning Commission website for this. The Planning Commission website hosts all the RPA documents, all the transportation plans we do, articles. We also write articles relating to transportation planning, which are published in a quarterly newsletter that are sent out to the cities and counties. We send out press releases on projects. Also, when we're requesting public input, we send out press releases, and these are sent out to local newspapers. We give presentations to local boards and groups, and our technical advisory committees and Policy Board meetings are open to the public. When we're requesting input on planning documents and document changes, and for like amendments and changes to the tip, to provide information on transportation planning and document changes, the RPA invites the public to offer input or make comment by submitting feedback during the designated comment period or by attending a public hearing. We propose, the proposed documents may be reviewed on our website. We post documents on our website during the review period, or we have them available in our office. Comments may be submitted by email, by phone, or in person during business hours, or comments may also be presented during the public hearing at the Policy Board. The RPA may also use public forums or stakeholder meetings to obtain specific or targeted input from groups. And then, there's more detail on timelines for all this outlined in our public participation plan. And then it's kind of some more unique activities we're doing. We also do a regional trails plan, which we do every five years, which documents the existing trails in the region, and incorporates local trails plans, identifies issues related to trails development within the region, sets goals and objectives for future trail development, and identifies future trails, lists funding sources to assist cities and counties with trail development. We update that every five years. We're trying to help smaller cities that may not have as much experience with planning, so we're doing something called a stride plan. It's, as I said, to help smaller cities that may not have experience. We'll provide staff time to collect data and prepare a plan, or kind of do like a capital improvements plan and identify projects. We just did a bike-ped plan for Otomo to identify and prioritize connections between the residential neighborhoods and the existing trails, parks, and schools in the city of Otomo. And we identified a network of eight-foot side paths and six-foot sidewalks in the city there, and we'll continue to meet with them to annually review the plan along with the city's capital improvements program, and hope to kind of each year identify street projects to kind of integrate improvements with. And we're currently working with the city of Otomo on a parking study to assess the availability, accessibility, and safety of parking in their Main Street Business District, and to make recommendations for improvement. The study will include online surveys to gather opinions for business owners, employers, and visitors, develop maps of parking facilities and types of parking, and a parking audit of the usage of parking. And then, kind of, we're also responsible for, we receive STBG and TAP funding that we're responsible for awarding and programming, and I believe the mayor handed out a page that shows kind of gives an overview of that. STBG funds are used primarily for road improvements, though they may also be used for other projects, including bridges, transit, or TAP-eligible projects. Since 1995, we've received about $44 million in STBG funds to the region. We currently receive an allocation of about $2 million per year. Of this, Fairfield receives an annual sub-allocation of $184,000. And then I kind of listed there below the awards that Fairfield has received for projects. You can see Fairfield has received a number of awards from 1996, and then kind of going down through 2021. That's the, we awarded that one, I think, this past year, and so in total, Fairfield's been awarded $1,870,219 in STBG funds, and these are federal funds. They're awarded on an 80/20 basis, so you're awarded, it's an 80/20 match, so you have to match 20% for every, you have to match 20% for every 80% of federal dollars you get. And then the TAP funds are primarily used for trail projects, but they may also be used for other bike and pet improvements, including safe routes to school, or they may also be used for other, like, things like scenic byway improvements. Since '95, the RPA has received a total of $4 million in TAP funds. Last year, we had an annual allocation of $235,000, and then I listed what the, kind of, some of the projects that have been awarded in or around Fairfield. And as you can see, Fairfield, Fairfield area has been awarded about $1,126,000 in TAP funds for mainly trail projects.
And Chris, the difference there from the STBG funding is that there is a guaranteed allocation for the surface-street funding, whereas the trail projects are based on a preparedness and a deservability for the community being ready to utilize that, because during that period of time when we were very active in developing our loop trail, we got about a quarter of that funding, so.
Yes, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, the STBG funds, we have a formula that's based on, it's the city's population.
Correct.
And so you're guaranteed a certain amount, and if you don't spend it, you can, you can kind of accumulate it or bank it up, and then, whereas the TAP funds, it's kind of all competitive pool, so your applications are judged against other cities or counties that submitted at the same time.
Great. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate you coming over and giving us this synopsis of all those activities. We each year approve funding for the Area 15 RPA, and now we know where all of our dollars are going. We really appreciate that. Council, any questions? Board press? Again, thanks so much, and I think our next item of business will be to approve the public participation plan. Now, so I think inside that document, you have a simple resolution that essentially states that we approve the regional planning affiliation and adopt the RPA 15 Public Participation Plan for the five-county region. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Now council, we'll move on to our next action item, which is consideration of amendment to a resolution that we voted on at our last meeting, and you've had a chance to review that. Any questions on the memo and the amendment to it? Okay. Now entertain a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hamilton. Is there a second? Second by Thompson. Thank you, Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, council, we have the second reading for our off-street parking requirements, and Melanie, I ask you to address the council on a slight amendment that's been added to that.
Mm-hmm. So the memo that's attached to the agenda includes supporting information on a couple things the council asked, both during the meeting and outside of the meeting. The first that I want to address is the loading zone, and Councilman Hamilton brought that up, and after further research, we decided that it is, it was an oversight to exclude it, and we did need to include it, and so you'll see that as an amendment to your ordinance document, leaving it as it is currently in the code, which is a 40-foot by 10-foot stall. It just changes the letter that it is in the code. Then next on the memo is, there was a question about parking at other apartment buildings, and you'll see on that memo is the list of apartments that we called, and really only one of them said that they had any current problems, and that was one that had less than one space per unit. It was at .6. But the rest of them that hovered right around that 1.5 said they currently do not have any problems. And then lastly, we were asked about if there are any houses that are typically used as rentals, where there might be five or more units within a, under one roof, and based off current city code that talks about what is inspected during the rental process, the parking is not currently inspected as the rental process. Parking requirements are really only addressed during new construction, so under current code, these houses are not going to be affected positively or negatively with this change.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Any questions for Melanie? If not, we will open up the public hearing at this time, if there are any public comments on the second reading of the ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to move this reading, this ordinance 1152, from the second to the third reading.
So moved.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Discussion? Now please call the roll.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I have some appointments. These are to fill positions that have expired. They are in the Library Board, three appointments, Katie Van Pelt, Nan Cameron, and Joe Steever, the Fairfield Media Center, Richard Thompson, and the Beautification Commission, Joel Boatwright. I would entertain a motion to approve those six, or five, five appointments to Library Board, Fairfield Media Center, and Beautification Commission.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hallie, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. We'll move then to our committee reports, Personnel Committee.
We met just about two weeks ago, interviewed four very qualified candidates for the position of Planning and Zoning Assistant. Wish we could have hired them all, and then ended up going with Don Travis. It was our choice who we approved in our consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Michael?
Oh, no, we met tonight, but we had to table the issue at hand to a later date.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move then to Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met this evening prior to council and had three agenda items. The first was, a citizen had brought to the committee a concern, or a request, more importantly, for a no-right turn on red to be placed at 12th Street in Burlington, which is the Hy-Vee corner, Hy-Vee Burger-Hamberg corner. And with input from everybody in the room, including the citizen, that request has been tabled as there was no good solution to the situation between business driveways being blocked and Burlington traffic needing to flow. So Melanie and Darrell and the committee will continue to research and try to find some sort of solution, not necessarily making everybody happy, but keeping traffic flowing as it should be. We did review an ordinance that's been drafted by Mr. Morrissey for ATV use within city limits. The group that brought the request was there. We have a few minor changes to make to that, and Mr. Morrissey should have that ordinance ready for first reading at the next council meeting, October 23rd. And the final item we looked at was the fireworks ordinance, and the committee has requested that Mr. Morrissey draft an amendment to that, limiting fireworks use to July 3rd and July 4th, December 31st, January 1st, which is a reduction of what was currently in the ordinance. And that, again, should be ready for first reading at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Katie. I appreciate the committee taking that up early, while the impressions are still fresh in the community with all of the feedback that they'd received, so thank you very much. Next then, our Environmental and Franchise Committee.
Yes, we met earlier this evening as well, and first thing was, we looked at the results so far of the survey that is ongoing regarding our solid waste collection, and I will present those results here. It was pretty clear what the outcome was here. There were three questions, and they were asked the people, and I thank everybody who participated in this. We had well over 200 responses so far. Some people, unfortunately, the way that we were able, we had to delay getting these out in the water bills for some people, and so they're going to be coming the next weeks, but we still appreciate your input if you want to reply. But we had, the first question was, "I'm interested in being able to regularly dispose of more trash without needing to attach a tag." Of the 200 some respondents, 32 expressed interest in that. "I'm willing to pay for an additional $1.50 per month to rent a 96-gallon wheeled cart to hold my trash, the same size as the current recycling cart. This would allow me to dispose of 30 gallons more per week than presently allowed." We had 44 people out of the 200 some ask for that, or say that they would appreciate that. And then the third question was, "I am satisfied with the current trash-collective system." 161 people voted for that. So it was almost four to one, people in favor of maintaining the present system, not requiring or imposing a levy on everybody of $1.50 a month for these carts. So we did have Dave Schaub, the Waste Management Rep, with us at our meeting. We presented these results to him. It was pretty clear. And so we asked him, first of all, you know, if he's, if they're going to save a lot of money by having these, you know, automated, you know, carts to be, you know, emptied mechanically, that we're certainly willing to have carts if they want to supply them for us, but it's pretty clear our residents don't want to pay for them. Well, he said it's a big capital expense, and they wouldn't go that route, but they are going to come back with us, to us with a proposal to maintain the present service. He said there'll be a minor increase that they're going to ask for. We're looking at a five-year contract. Some of the things he's talking about doing in the new contract, apparently right now people maybe not know about it, but people can rent these bigger carts for $4 a month right now if they want to have them and have the 96 gallons a week. He's going to reduce that to $3 a month. They're also going to have a webpage for us to link to to help explain just about our trash collection service in general, when the recycling days are and all that, and then also to help educate people on, about recycling. We'd suggest even maybe once in a while have enclosures in our water bill, but, you know, like people like putting plastic bags in recycling, which is a big problem, things like that, that they shouldn't do. And then they have this, what they call Waste Watch, that they're happy to coordinate with the police in case issues come up. Often they'll see like some kind of public health issues that might come up, maybe someone, you know, that some household that may need attention because they're, for some reason, that, you know, they, the garbage men know about you, and so they suggested, they offered to do that. And then also, they're going to go with the yard waste, they're going to get rid of the bags, but go with stickers, but you have to supply your own bag, cannot be plastic, for yard waste. In any event, the idea was, we may have by the next council meeting, a contract for the whole council to consider. I believe Dave will be here to represent it himself, and so if there's questions or negotiations, the whole council can also be in on it. And that was basically our meeting, yes.
Okay. It just, I think it's just dawning on me that it's a little, a little strange that we're being asked to promote this new program. I mean, if this has, creates any kind of economic incentive or makes, streamlines their business in a way, you think they would be the ones that would want to reach out to the community, educate them, promote it, and see, you know, what kind of feedback they got directly from... they got directly from customers. And I understand that, that's, you know, that property owners are really contracting with the city, but this, they are, again, everyone knows that there is a business behind that that's serving the city, and why aren't they part of reaching out to the citizens to see what they want?
They originally wanted to do the survey, but the questions were very leading, and so the committee took the questions on locally.
And how were they going to do it?
Survey monkey.
They were going to do a survey monkey, but, you know, I.
And do they have, do they have email addresses to reach out to customers?
No.
Yeah. Okay.
They were going to just advertise on their website or something.
Just an observation, really? Just that I, if it's, you know, it's their business, and if they want to see a transformation in the community, then they should be outselling it.
I did have a couple of questions. This is just a renewal of the contract. It doesn't have to go out for.
Bids?
Bids.
Um, maybe it should.
Well, I think the last time we, we up against a renewal, and we were challenged with, by another company to set this out to bid. Yeah.
Because it was up for renewal, but it was deemed to be an open contract.
Expired, in fact.
Right. Expired.
We can, we can do that if the council is interested. We had talked about it. I think one of the reasons we didn't pursue it is because we weren't sure that there was enough time, given the fact that our contract with them is expiring November 30th. But they, Waste Management, I mean, they said that they're going to work with us, they're not going to cancel our service either way, and, you know, if we're late on renewing this. So, if the council would like to do that, we're certainly open to it.
This time, make them sealed bids so that no contractor or bidder sees the other price. That was an issue years past, that Waste Management showed their bid publicly at a committee meeting, and then the competitor was able to then.
Well, I think that's what happened. I think that we were in a renewal process, and the bid was shown, and then it was brought up that, you know, we wanted to go into a competitive bidding process. It's hard to put the horse back in the barn, as they say.
Things that could possibly give an advantage to another bidder. You just reviewed some items that you said were going to be reduced, and others that were going to change, and that kind of thing in the contract, so.
I.
We've already put that out publicly, so.
Well, I would, I would leave it up to the committee to decide if they want to go out and.
I'm open to advice from the council. I frankly, if you feel it's worth it, if you think there's someone who would bid, I, there is.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, we have another local.
But sealed bids that are open at the same time, you know, let's do it that way.
Are you recommending that, Mike?
Yeah. Make a motion to recommend we open up to competitive bidding.
Okay, we've motioned by Hallie to explore a competitive bid on our new trash collection contract. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Revulinski.
I don't care, but I guess a yes, okay.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay. It is unanimous. You have your direction.
Okay, well, we'll do that.
All right. Thank you, John. Any other points from your committee?
A question, the stickers on the recycling containers expire at the end of this year. Could you ask them to get the new ones out there?
What Waste Management said was, they were going to dispense of those stickers, and they're going to just put a, it's all going to be check online.
Or calendars, paper calendars.
There are calendars available also at City Hall, I believe.
Right.
We could, we could include one in a water bill, but let's just see who ends up doing this next year before we get to those details.
Okay. Thank you, John. So, counsel, you'll receive an email, let's, probably tomorrow, with the final schedule for all the activities on Friday and Saturday, as far as the interview sessions with our four candidates for city administrator. So we will get those to you as quickly as we have that. And also, before we adjourn this evening, we're just a little under two weeks before our city clerk retires, Joy Messer, but this is her last meeting. So this is the last time publicly that Joy will be a part of, really, the deliberation of so many important community issues over the years through our local government. Joy is basically been such a big part of, of all of the, you know, the great decisions and processing that we've all gone through here. As elected officials, we're here for a certain purpose. Joy's has been to be of service to that process all of these years, 38 years, a minimum of probably 30 meetings a year when we talk about special meetings, and then more. So, Joy is someone that really shares a big, big part of this process, and she has been a joy to serve it with. And I realized tonight also that I think one of the things that I'm going to miss most is that voice that calls the roll. It's comforting, it's professional, it's confident. It really is something that we've appreciated and enjoyed over all of these years. We're going to celebrate a formal retirement with you, but tonight is special because this is the last time that you'll be here with us in this process. So, Joy, thank you so much for these wonderful years of support of the council, your two mayors. And we are going to miss you immensely, but you really deserve this retirement. I don't know what you're going to do on Monday nights outside of football season, but do let us know that, I hope that you're watching on what's streaming. We'll give you a couple months off to sort of think that through, but. Anyway, I want to say thank you very much. Counsel, I invite you to express any sentiments you'd like as well.
I'll chime in here for me. Joy, you've been a real joy to be with. It's, you know, kind of, keeping the ship steady here and keep it, keeping our spirits light and in line, kind of, the whole time, and so, I'm leaving too, so.
You guys can get together on Monday night.
Yeah, we can get together on Monday night, yeah. To watch the meeting on.
Yeah. Definitely.
But it's, it's been a real pleasure, Joy, and thank you for all you've given to the city.
Thank you.
And to all of us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I won't be shy. Joy's the reason I'm here. I came to her before I put my papers in, and she more or less handed them to me and told me what to do, and I sat at her desk a couple times and said, "What did you get me into?" More than a couple times.
I know. I was going to say the same thing, Katie. I mean, I remember coming in and saying, you know, "I was thinking about running for city council," and she said, "Well, why are you thinking? Why aren't you doing this?" And I'm like, "Well, you know, after you had to deal with my husband for so many years, are you sure that you want to have to stabilize me and say, 'Listen.'" So, as I say, it really, Joy's always been a special friend, certainly, as well as a stabilizing force, I think, for the, for the council, for all of us, that, you know, she sort of can see both sides of our concerns. So, thank you, Joy.
Thank you, Martha.
I'd like to say thank you to Joy. I've worked with you for 15 years on stuff, and I've enjoyed every time that we've had close work items to go through. You're very knowledgeable. You really have handled yourself well in some very adverse situations that we've run into in the past, and I'm very thankful that you were here during my time on the council.
Thank you, Derek.
Well, see, I'm in my case, the second time around, and, you know, first time, and I'm still learning from it, and I appreciate that. So, I never knew that calling the roll could be so important.
Oh, yeah.
There's a technique to that.
There is a technique, yes.
Thanks, Tom.
Well, Joy, I wish we could somehow take all your 37 years of experience and make a montage out of it, things you've probably seen. But, you know, you made it that long as a public official, that's, that's saying something, because, you know, you're under the public eye, and so you really had to be, you know, a stand-up respectable person, which you are. So, thank you for setting the bar so high for us.
Thank you, Michael.
Joy, just want to say thanks for your service, and I've been here a little while, but you're one of the first people I go to on any questions, so you're important. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Great. Thank you, counsel.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, every, you know, all of you. My husband said, I like what he, he says, "Not only does she know where the bodies are buried, she knows who did it." So, yeah, there's been a, oh, gosh, yeah, there's been a, it's gone fast. I mean, it really has. I never in a million years thought I would stay this long, but I told Ed today, obviously, you know, I liked it or I wouldn't have stayed. It's been, the city of Fairfield has been really good to me. I mean, they really have. And I think, I figured 50-some council members I've worked with, I think, and two mayors, and several department heads, you know, we've, you just grow together. I mean, Darrell and I have been together for 30 years. You know, we've watched our kids grow up, now we got grandkids, and, you know, it's, it's just been a, it's been a really good ride. It really has, and I'm thankful to each and every one of you, too. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Joy. We're thankful, Joy. Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.